Call this meeting in the common council to order. Roll call, please.
Alderman Kraus?
Here.
Horn?
Here.
Byer?
Here.
Peachey?
Here.
Miller?
Here.
Brandl?
Here.
Lars?
Here.
Tully?
Alderman Tully is excused this evening. This time we'll entertain public participation. Anyone wishing to address the council may do so. We ask that you please come to the podium, state your name and address and reason for appearing. Seeing no one, we'll move on to a presentation regarding the gold designation for a healthy community. And welcome Tracy.
Should I speak at the microphone?
Please do.
Well, thank you. I'm just here today from Ford Healthcare to present the city with these gold designation award signs for you to put up around the city where you're pleased to help Ford Healthcare and the county celebrate this award designation. I would, I just wanted to highlight that the Wisconsin Healthy Community Designation was a new initiative that's offered through the Mobilizing Action Toward Community Health Group through the UW Population Health Institute. So this program is designed to recognize and encourage the achievements of health improvements in different communities through Wisconsin. So Ford Healthcare with some county partners and then also city partners as well, multiple community partners applied for this award and received the gold status. So it's a big achievement for the county. Jefferson County is only one of four in Wisconsin of all those who applied that achieved gold status. So there were multiple initiatives that were submitted and those are highlighted within this booklet that I gave you. Some of those included things like the Healthy Community Coalitions, which Jefferson does have, JUMP is a Healthy Community Coalition here in Jefferson. And also just some of the other work that the city has done over the past few years, particularly your new initiative or branding for the city, getting outside bicycle maps and directional maps for recreational areas and all the different things that you have done really contribute to the success of the community as a whole, to not only make our different communities around Jefferson County desirable places to live, but also ones that make our people and community members healthy as well. So we just want to thank you and hope that you can find a great place to put the signs up and let community members of Jefferson know about it as well. So any questions or did you want to say anything Cindy?
No. Any questions with Tracy? No, well, thank you and thank-
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you to Ford Healthcare for stowing this honor. We appreciate that and we would like to all encourage one another to live a healthy lifestyle.
Absolutely, thank you. We appreciate working with the city and all the community business partners in the city of Jefferson as well.
Great, thank you Tracy. I would like to share a couple of things I omitted in public participation, just as a note, I think everybody on the calls who got an invitation, but the public is certainly welcome to the McDermott Top Shop Grand Opening, which will occur on Wednesday, June 5th. And of course, then also this coming Monday, our Memorial Day Observation here in Rotary Waterfront Park at 10:30 a.m., sponsored by the Legion and the VFW. So we look forward to seeing you all there as well. Next, we will welcome Vasvi Joshi from Baker Tilly Verscho Kraus, our auditors, and a summary of the 2008 general audit.
Thank you.
Welcome Vasvi.
Yeah, thank you very much. I'm Vasvi Joshi from Baker Tilly. I'm a senior manager there and I'm in charge of the city's audit. My pleasure to be here. Thank you for having me here today. Just to give you an introduction to the audit process, there are a couple of teams that does the city audit. There is the general municipal city audit team and that would be led by me. And we come out here twice a year, once in the fall or November, December timeframe, and that's we call, that's what we call a preliminary audit. And that's when we take a look at the city's processes and controls and just a high level overview of the activity that has taken place. And that helps us devise our audit procedures for the detailed audit that we do sometime in February or March timeframe. We also have another audit team that does the sewer and storm audit and a third audit team that does the audit for the Jefferson utilities. And at the end of their audits, we put together, we pull all their numbers in and we put together the city's audited financial statements and we give an opinion on those numbers. So I'm pleased to announce again this year that the city has received a clean or unmodified audit opinion, which is the highest level of assurance auditors can give. So congratulations to the city on that. As part of the audit report, there is a smaller section, which is called a Management's Discussion and Analysis, and that's just like a summary and a comparative between current year and prior year. As if you don't have enough time to read through the entire maybe 100-page audit report, I do recommend you go through maybe 10 or 12 pages of Management's Discussion and Analysis and that will give you a good idea of the activity and the why and what happened, you know, during the year 2018. Even to summarize further, I brought this nice handout today and I focused on certain areas where, you know, usually the community members are interested into, like general funds, you know, fund balance and the debt and, you know, those type of things. So the very first page, this colorful pie chart page, shows the details of city's general fund fund balance. And as you can see, it has been kind of separate or classified into three different categories. The very first category is the non-spendable fund balance. And these categories come from the accounting standards. You know, the standards tell us, okay, what can go in the first category, the second category and the last category. So the first is non-spendable, which includes amounts that are just not in the spendable form. So either they are tied up in like prepaid type of assets or just long-term, you know, receivables or assets that are just not available for spending currently. So that's the most kind of restricted category, as we call it. And the next one, the city had, so in that category, the city had about $98,000 for 2018, at the end of 2018. The next category is the assigned fund balance. So that's about $900,000, which the city decided to kind of put aside for various purposes. And the details of what those purposes are can be found within the financial statements. It's on, if you have a paper copy, I think there are enough paper copies. Tanya has a lot of coffee copies, if you want to, you know, take a look at them. They are on page 54 of the financial statements. And purposes could be subsequent year's budget or any like street type of projects or any special projects that the city wants to, you know, put some money aside. So that's all is included in that 900-some thousand. And the last category is the unassigned fund balance and the city had about $2.1 million of general fund balance in there. And that's just like a free, you know, residual fund balance that is available for spending, you know, for, on anything the city chooses to. And down below is just a pie chart of, that shows the percentages, you know, the majority of it is unassigned, about 68 percent. The assigned is about a 29 percent and the remaining small section is the non-spendable fund balance. And I don't have included in this slide, but I just wanted to kind of quickly also let you know about how the general fund did compared to budget. So revenues were budgeted at about 6.6 million and the actual revenues ended up being about that much, about 6.6 million. And the total budgeted expenditures were at about 6.8 and the actuals ended up being at 6.2. So there was some savings of expenditures there. And overall, the general fund's fund balance went up by about 380-some thousand. And again, the details of all of this is within the audited financial statements. There is a separate section just for general funds budget to actual. Moving on to page two, so this is just a trend information on the city's unassigned fund balance compared to, or not the city's, the general fund's unassigned fund balance compared to the general fund's expenditure. So as you can see, the trend, it's in about like 40 percentage, you know, over a period of five years.
What's a normal unassigned balance for a city of our size?
It would be, you know, around that much, you know, around, yeah, that's about, you know, where I have seen, you know, a city at your size. And unfortunately, I don't have that kind of information for unassigned general fund balances, but for other charts, I do have, you know, community your size, where does the city stand compared to other communities. So the next one, that is page three, shows the general obligation debt outstanding of the city. And this information includes the utilities. The city had about 6.2 million and utility had about 1.2 million of general obligation debts, a total of about 7.4 million. The city did issue new debt in 18 and that was for the new police facility building, you know, about 2.4 million. And we compare this different ways. So as per the Wisconsin state statutes, a community's general obligation debt cannot be more than 5 percent of the equalized value of that community. So 5 percent of equalized value of city of Jefferson is or was at about 26.7 million in 2018. And the city's general obligation debt was at about 7.4 million, which was about 28 percent of that limit that is set by the Wisconsin statute. So city was well within that limit and it still has like more capacity. And I'm not saying just because it has more, it should issue more debt, but I mean, city, I'm saying the city is standing in a healthy debt position, you know. And the two bar charts that I have, the left one is again, shows the same percentage for the city and then the reference high, median and low for the communities, the city's size. So the blue is the high reference, the red one is the medium and the dark blue is the city of Jefferson. So as you can see, the city is, you know, even lower than the median, which is a good, you know, situation to be in. And the chart on the right side shows how much is the general obligation debt outstanding per capita. So per capita, it was about $927. And again, as the chart shows, the city of Jefferson was even lower than the median, which was, which is the red bar and the city is at the dark blue bar. So again, a healthy situation to be in for per capita general obligation debt. The next trend information also shows some debt-related analysis. So this is the debt service for just the governmental funds. So, you know, people like to know, how much are we spending on debt service compared to how much the total expenditures are? So as per the bond agencies, you know, they recommend no more than 20 percent should be spent on debt service. So the chart below, as you can see, the purple line is what the bond agencies recommend, that's at 20 percent. And the city's line is the dark blue line under, which was at about 13 percent for 2018. So again, way below, well within what bond agencies recommend. That's what they like to see. And the other, the red dots at the top are the high and the green ones are where the median are. And I think even for 2008, you know, last couple of years, I feel like the city was lower than even the median range again, which is a healthy situation to be in. Page number five shows a trend information for general funds revenues. And as you can see, it's, there are no, you know, sharp ups and downs. It's like, you know, nice smooth flow over a period of five years. And the largest revenue source of course is taxes, you know, levy. That's typical for all governments that we audit. So the next page shows the same information as a pie chart and this is just for 2018. Again, the tax revenue was the highest source, which was at 57 percent, followed by intergovernmental. So that includes your state aids or any other grants or monies that you have received from the state and federal agencies. Page number seven shows the similar type of trend information, but for general funds expenditures. And again, as you can see, it's no sharp ups and downs there, you know, it's, it's, the trend looks pretty consistent from year to year for the last five years. And page eight shows general funds expenditure for 2018 in a pie chart presentation. And as you can see, public safety is almost half, you know, more than half of total general fund expenditures, which is again typically what we have seen at other communities. And public works and general government are the next two highest categories. The last page of the presentation shows an analysis of the net position of governmental activities. So what, what we do, and again, this is required by auditing or accounting standards, we take the citywide information for all funds and we kind of convert it into how, you know, like a business like. So we, we say, okay, now the numbers include all capital assets of the cities, includes like the roads and everything, the buildings and everything. And they also include all related long-term liabilities, so the debt and the compensated absences, those type of things. So when we put all of that together, that gives us a better picture of, you know, where the city stands. And as you can see, the net position as a percentage of total assets is pretty consistent for the last five years. So that, you know, that is what we like to see versus, you know, going a downward going trend means it's not, you know, so much of a good situation. And always upward or a consistent trend is more preferable and that's where city is at. So that is the end of that presentation. As part of the audit, we also issue another smaller report. As I mentioned, when we come in around fall or November, December timeframe, we look at the city's processes and controls and in part of that, as part of that, we do recommend, you know, a few things to strengthen the city's internal controls. So this communication to those charged with governance is another smaller report that we issue. So that includes some of those recommendations. Any other, you know, observations we have or recommendations we have noted are included in there. If there are any material journal entries we have made, that is part of this report too. So any non-attached type of services we have provided, we have listed in there. So I mean, if there is maybe one or two documents you want to look at, so one would be the Management Discussion and Analysis that gives you the financial overview of the city, whereas this is everything else. So I do recommend you try to at least glance through this and let us know if you have any questions or anything else you want us to cover next time. Any questions you have for me?
Do you have any concerns or questions about our internal control?
No, no real concerns or questions, you know, at this point. I mean, we have seen the typical segregation of duties type of issues that we see for the community this size, you know, you can only have so many number of people and you always need to cross-train them because if people go on vacation, you know, so if Tanya is gone, then Sarah needs to know certain things that Tanya is supposed to be doing. So those are the type of things we have noticed. So nothing that we have not seen at other places. So I mean, we do say they are like material weaknesses, which means it is possible that, you know, something, things might go wrong and it might, like material, like large numbers, you know, and might not get caught. But I mean, nothing out of the ordinary that we have not seen at other places of community this size, so.
Are there any other questions with Vasvi?
I would, you know, in the future, you know, see some type of comparison to-
Your microphone, please. Thank you.
Check, check. In the future, I'd like to see some type of a comparison to other communities. You know, when we look at page eight with the breakdown of public safety, public works and such, how are we comparing to them? I mean, are we spending more on one section and not enough on the other?
Yep, I would say that you are pretty, you know, much where other communities are at, you know, almost every community we go to, I've seen almost 50 percent or more than 50 percent is public safety, which is their police and fire, you know. And public works is usually the next category. So that's where I think the city is at too, so, yep. But yep, I can, I mean, try to see if I can gather some data from other communities your size, so.
Any other question?
Any other questions or comments? No? Thank you Vasvi, we appreciate your work as always.
Okay, thank you so much. And I would like to thank, you know, Tim and Tanya and Sarah and everybody at the city who helped answer all those questions for, without them, you know, we do look at a lot of audit documentation and do ask a lot of questions up until, you know, we start from November, we don't stop until we issue the audit report. So we do thank you for their cooperation and answering all their questions, so, thank you.
Thank you. Next, we'll move on to an appointment by the mayor and confirmed by the city council for the library board. It's the school district representative and the school district of Jefferson is recommending Richard Lovett. I will entertain a motion for approval.
So moved.
Mr. Peachey, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Byer. Any discussion? Hearing none. On a voice vote, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 No, if you're opposed. Passes. Thank you. Sarah, did you assign this or ask for resolution number eight?
I asked Alderman Lars to read it.
Okay. Next is resolution number eight, tonight's consent agenda. Alderman Lars, please.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor. Fellow council members, citizens of Jefferson, City of Jefferson, Resolution Number Eight. Be it resolved by the common council of the city of Jefferson, Wisconsin, that the consent agenda for May 21st, 2019 is hereby adopted. A vouchers payable for May 2019 in the amount of $276,146.78. Payroll summary for May 10th, 2019 in the amount of $164,157. B council minutes for May 7th, 2019 of the common council. C street closures for July 3rd celebration. D as approved by, license approved by regulatory committee. The only one we had was sale of goods for Ziggy's Treat Wagon, Big Bar Ice Cream and Rob's Food Wagon. I so move.
It's been moved, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Miller. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of approval of the consent agenda, please signify by saying aye. As Sarah calls your name, no, if you're opposed.
Alderman Horn?
Aye.
Byer?
Aye.
Peachey?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Brandl?
Aye.
Lars?
Aye.
Kraus?
Aye.
Thank you, it's unanimous. Resolution number nine, a resolution accepting the 2018 general audit. Alderman Peachey, please.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor Uperman, fellow council members and citizens of Jefferson. City of Jefferson, Resolution Number Nine. Be it resolved by the common council of the city of Jefferson, Wisconsin, that the 2018 general purpose financial statements and audit report are hereby accepted. I would so move.
It's been moved, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Brandl. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, on a voice vote, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
No, if you're opposed. It's unanimous, thank you. Resolution number 10, a resolution authorizing agreements with Vanderwald and Associates for a 10-year update of the City of Jefferson Comprehensive Plan and a full rewrite of the City of Jefferson zoning ordinance. Alderman Horn, please.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, council members and citizens of Jefferson. City of Jefferson, Resolution Number 10. Whereas Wisconsin Statute 66.1001 requires every Wisconsin community that utilizes zoning and/or land division regulations must adopt a full update of its comprehensive plan every 10 years. And whereas the city's existing comprehensive plan is facing its 10-year deadline for the required update, and whereas the city's current zoning ordinance largely dates from the 1960s with many spot updates adopted since, the results in the zoning code that is difficult to use and administer. More importantly, the code does not readily accommodate the many forms of land use and development that have emerged over the last 50 years, in particular, in the last 10 years. And whereas the finance committee has reviewed proposals from Vanderwald and Associates, the city land use planning consultant, to undertake both projects per a scope of services developed by the city staff and is recommending both proposals to the common council for work to begin first on the comprehensive plan update, followed by the development of a new zoning ordinance. And now therefore be resolved by the City of Jefferson Common Council, that a hearing approves and authorizes agreement with Vanderwald and Associates Incorporated to update the city's comprehensive plan in the amount not to exceed $52,659. In an agreement with Vanderwald and Associates to rewrite the city's zoning ordinance in amount not to exceed $62,340, total of both proposals of $114,999. The sum of $115,000 has been designated reserved fund balance in the 2018 City of Jefferson audit to fund these projects. The common council additionally authorized the mayor, city administrator and city clerk are authorized to execute said agreements on behalf of the City of Jefferson upon the review and consent of the city attorney. I so move.
It's been moved, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Kraus. Any discussion? Any questions or comments?
So they're going to review all those, our whole zonings and make recommendations for $100,000? Is that the-
The proposal Peggy is for $114,999 that it rewrites our master plan as the first project and then the second project, it's a full rewrite of our existing zoning ordinance. So I think the answer is yes to what you asked. It's a full rewrite.
Okay.
It would, I would generally say, you could probably expect some of you will work, you will work on this in 12 months, because I think that's how long it will take, about six months for a comp plan. And then the zoning ordinance, which actually may be more of a difficult project than the master plan, probably six months too. So 12 months and generally, I've chatted with Mike about being in a position to start July 1-ish, the comp plan, that's, that's, that's first step.
Is this in conjunction with the citizens of Jefferson or with the zoning? How, do they work with the building? I'm not sure how they would determine what our zoning needs would be.
Vanderwald?
Yes.
Oh, they've been the city's planning consultant for as long as I've been here and I think they probably have a 20-year relationship. So, yeah, yeah, they know. They're pretty expert in those fields of city planning and city zoning ordinance management.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none. All in favor of approval of the agreements with Vanderwald and Associates for a 10-year update of the comprehensive plan and a full rewrite of the City of Jefferson zoning ordinance, please signify by saying aye, as Sarah calls your name, no, if you're opposed.
Alderman Peachey?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Brandl?
Aye.
Lars?
Aye.
Kraus?
Aye.
Horn?
Aye.
Byer?
Aye.
It's unanimous, thank you. Resolution number 11, a resolution authorizing the award of a contract for the 2019 electronic monument sign at the city north entrance. Alderman Brandl, please.
Honorable Mayor Uperman, fellow council members and citizens of Jefferson. City of Jefferson, Resolution Number 11, authorizing award of contract for the 2019 electronic monument sign, city's north entrance. Whereas the city of Jefferson received three bids from the contractors interested in fabricating and installing the 2019 electronic monument sign on the city's north side. And whereas the value of the lowest bidder is included in the following table. LaCrosse Sign, base bid $44,305. Sign Art, $46,720. Michael Signs, $47,600. Whereas the base and alternative bids- Peachey?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Brandl?
Aye.
Lars?
Aye.
Kraus?
Aye.
Horn?
Aye.
Byer?
Aye.
Peachey?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Brandl?
Aye.
Lars?
Aye.
Kraus?
Aye.
Horn?
Aye.
Byer?
Aye.
Peachey?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Brandl?
Aye.
Lars?
Aye.
Kraus?
Aye.
Horn?
Aye.
Byer?
Aye.
Peachey?
Aye.
It's unanimous, thank you. Resolution number 12, a resolution authorizing and implementing recommendations for a limited market labor, excuse me, limited labor market analysis study conducted by Carlson Detman Consulting. Alderman Kraus, please.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, fellow council members and citizens of Jefferson. City of Jefferson, resolution number 12, whereas the City of Jefferson retained the services of Carlson Detman Consulting in 2018 to review the competitiveness of its 2019 pay structure. Carlson Detman was previously retained by the city to develop its current pay plan in 2014. And whereas Carlson Detman completed the study during the spring 2020 and issued a series of recommendations as part of the final report on April 3rd. I believe that should read spring of 2019. Whereas the finance committee has reviewed the report and recommends its adoption and implementation to the common council, and now therefore be it resolved by the common council of the City of Jefferson, Wisconsin, that it herein approves and accepts the Carlson Detman Limited Labor Market Analysis Study and directs staff to implement its findings and recommendations effective January 1, 2020. I would so move.
It's been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Brandl. Any discussion?
Mayor, this was discussed at finance, I think, previous meeting, and was unanimous.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments?
Do we need to make a amendment to the resolution for spring of 2019?
It's the way you read it.
It's the way you read it, okay, thank you.
That's the way you read it. That's the way you recorded it, correct? Thank you.
Good.
Good point. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none. All in favor of resolution number 12, please signify by saying aye as Sarah calls your name, no if you're opposed.
Mr. Brandl?
Aye.
Lars?
Aye.
Kraus?
Aye.
Horn?
Aye.
Byer?
Aye.
Peachey?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Brandl?
Aye.
Lars?
Aye.
Kraus?
Aye.
Horn?
Aye.
Byer?
Aye.
Peachey?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Brandl?
Aye.
Lars?
Aye.
Kraus?
Aye.
Horn?
Aye.
Byer?
Aye.
Peachey?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Brandl?
Aye.
Kraus?
Aye.
Horn?
Aye.
Byer?
Aye.
Peachey?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Brandl?
Aye.
It's unanimous, thank you. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Mr. Peachey?
Second.
Second by Mr. Lars. On a voice vote, all in favor signify by saying aye. Thank you, we are adjourned. 51.